Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for invocation?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Earlier this week, I had the pleasure of presenting a proclamation to the Rotary Club of Canton, celebrating their 85th anniversary of service to our city. And tonight, welcome back Mr. Shane Moore, the immediate past president of the Rotary Club, to give our invocation. So, welcome Shane.
The motto of the Rotary Club is service above self, and I believe our club and its members have displayed that in our great community for 85 years. God tells us, what God the Father considers to be pure and genuine religion is this: to take care of orphans and widows and their suffering, to keep oneself from being corrupted by the world. So we pray. Lord, thank you for this great place in which we live. Please constantly remind us of all, and always look for opportunities to serve and help others. Please bless our city, our leaders, and our residents. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Shane. So we'll call to order our June 2nd, 2022 council meeting. In consideration to approve tonight's agenda...
I need to request a very short executive session for real estate.
Very short? How many minutes? No, that's okay. Real estate?
Real estate.
Okay. Any other?
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I think we would like to table item 11B, the abandonment of Jackie Moore Lane. We want to, we'll bring that back on the 16th.
Okay. Okay. Tabling item 11B, adding a very short executive session to discuss real estate. Any other changes? Or any motions?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second. A motion is second. All members in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Pose name. All members voted for the motion. Before we get into our business meeting tonight, we do have three public hearings. Those of you who have not joined us before, I'm going to ask our city manager, Mr. Peppers, to review the policies and procedures for our public hearings before we get started.
Good evening. We thank you for attending the City of Canton Public Hearings. Tonight, we have public hearings on three cases. These hearings are recorded verbatim, and they do become part of the legal record for the cases being discussed. As such, you're required to sign up and fill out an affidavit to speak during the public hearing process. The public hearing was advertised in the legal organ, notice to neighboring property owners under the Development Code via mail, and notice to the public at large via the yellow public notice signs on the property or properties that are part of the case. The hearing will begin with a declaration of the mayor to open the public hearing, including the case number, description of the case, and a summary by staff of any preceding action. Those wishing to speak in favor of the applicant, including the applicant, will be given the first opportunity to speak. They'll have a total of 10 minutes to speak on behalf of their position. Those in opposition will then be given a total of 10 minutes to speak on behalf of their position. Those in support may reserve time to rebut or comment on any opposition statements. Once all parties have spoken, or the total time for each side has expired, the mayor will call close the public hearing. At that time, the city council will be free to discuss the case and question staff about the case. In the interest of all parties, and to give fairness to both sides, a timekeeper will be assigned to track the 10 minutes for each side. That's me. As there may be several speakers, we ask that you keep your comments concise and try not to duplicate the comments of other speakers. Please give your name and address for the record before you start your comments. Please address your comments to the council. The audience is asked to maintain decorum. Those that cannot adhere to that will be called out by the mayor, and you may be escorted from the hearing. The hearing process is a monologue, so the council will not answer any questions or make comments back during the public hearing process. Once the public hearing is closed, the council will then take up concerns, questions, or comments with the staff as part of the case. So, thank you all for being here tonight. Happy to answer any questions as they come up.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. So we'll begin with the public hearing discussion for case CUP 2202-003, conditional use permit request to construct 296 apartment complex at Misty Court and Misty Way. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As you stated, CUP 2202-003 is a request for a conditional use permit. This property is located along Misty Way and Misty Court. Currently, there are several homes there that are being occupied as duplex units. The property was annexed and zoned to R5 in 1999. At that time, the R5 zoning was the multiple-family zoning designation. In 2014, when the zoning map was readopted, it received the zoning designation of RM15, which is residential multifamily, 15 units to the acre. And as we all know, the CUP is required in order to construct a multifamily project, which is three units or more, three attached units. The applicant has met with the Board of Education, and they have settled upon a $250 mitigation fee per unit. There will be an issue of right-of-way abandonment out there for Misty Court and Misty Way. That will be coming up at a later date. With the number of units that they are asking for, they are required to have two means of ingress egress. The shortness of the length of property on Knox Bridge Highway presents a problem with the fire code. But they have been in talks with the Board of Education, and they may have reached out in agreement to access the property through what was the Teasley Middle School property as an emergency access. If that doesn't work out, there may be something that could be worked out with the fire marshal. They're also looking to obtain a waiver from the DOT as to the distance of curb cuts along Knox Bridge Highway. I understand that they have had some favorable talks with the Department of Transportation. And as you said, it's 296 units. Mr. Parks is here tonight to represent the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Green. So at this point, we will open the public hearing for case CUP 2202-003, and ask the applicant, and who wants to speak and present the case in support?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Parks, office of law firm, is Samz Larkin Huff, and I represent the applicant in regards to this conditional use permit that's before you tonight. As your, Steve just said, the property is currently zoned RM15. Conditional use permit is required when you have more than two units attached, and so that's the request coming before you today, is attaching more than two units together. The property is developed with two roads on it, one long road and another small cul-de-sac road. There are 22 residential units on the property now, and the applicant proposes to redevelop the site for 296 units with access off Knox Bridge Road. This is an area photographed giving you the location of the property. It is on Knox Bridge Highway. If you go further to the right, if you will, north is Highway 5, and River Green is to the left. And this is the old Teasley Middle School that's being used as an academy for the school of 6th through 12th, some alternative schooling, and also has high schooling out of it also. So, gives you a location of the property. The property is sandwiched between property that's zoned light industrial. Then you see the lighter color between that and the SU, which is a special designation for the school property. So it's located between these two properties. One interesting note is the LI property is owned by the Cherokee Development Authority, and they actually have plans, I believe, that are into the city for approval for development of that as an industrial park. And so, this aligns with putting jobs and people very located close to those jobs. There is good buffering between those two. In fact, I've reached out to the, and always have a thought is, you know, access off Knox Bridge Highway, is there, as they're developing and we're developing, is there any synergy between the two? But there is a, you can kind of see it here, there's a creek, state waters that runs right along our eastern property line. So there's no real connection that would make sense for those two to work together. But of course, the use does make sense with their proposed use of the property. One of the big concerns I know is the access on Knox Bridge Highway, and I know some council members are very concerned about it, as they should. We are working with GDOT on, obviously, we'll have to have our access and potential access points approved by GDOT. We'll have to meet that. One of the things that has been raised as a potential question and concern is the speed through there, and whether there's any way to lower the speed. We'll be glad to work with GDOT, with our traffic engineers, to see if we can get data that allows them to lower that speed limit through there. Been involved in doing that exact thing in front of the Canton Marketplace. That used to be 55 in that area here, and when Race Track came in, zoned in the county, but their driveway distances were not meeting the code, we actually petitioned GDOT to lower that speed limit, because it should be, and this might be a great opportunity to do that in this location here. This is the layout. You can see the bottom right-hand side is the main entrance. Then we've got a secondary entrance that is closer to the LI zone property, and you can see the creek line that runs there. And then we come in to the property, and we'll have an amenity area, and we'll have the amenity package in the front part. This site, as you can tell, has a significant, it's not heavily developed in terms of impervious. There's a lot of, not just with the creek line, but also towards the back where the detention area is going to be, and towards the school. There's a lot of areas that aren't going to be developed, that aren't going to have pavement on it. So it's about 50% of this site is not impervious, which is a lower density. This is the amenity area design, architectural design, trying to hopefully pick up some cues from some questions and go with lighter colors and grayer colors and whiter colors than the darker, darker colors that can look heavy. This is an architectural rendering of the proposed architecture, and this is some of the material that we would be proposing for the property. So, this is a, anticipated only 10% of the units would be three bedrooms. The other would be split between two and one-bedroom units. And that's very typical of multifamily. Multifamily is a product that's needed. When you have the, I think the average household size in Cherokee County is 2.7. When you have 2.7 as the average household size, that means you've got a lot of one- and two-bedroom households. And not everyone lives on a cul-de-sac in a typical single-family home. So, this housing option is needed in the area. It's got good access to traffic corridors, good access to, you know, the adjacent, hopefully, job center that's coming in there. And as I said, the property's zoned RM15 out now, so it's anticipated. In fact, you go back in your land use plan, it shows this is already entitled for 330 units. So it's been anticipated in your land use plan, and your housing study is, housing studies that have been done have always shown this as an entitled and proposed 330-unit complex. So, we think that this will be a great opportunity to have this redeveloped and bring 296 quality units into the city. And we ask that you recommend, or that you, you are not, you are the body, so you don't have to recommend anybody, but you recommend, that you approve this application as we presented it. We've had an opportunity to meet with y'all several times, and I know we had a public input meeting a couple days ago that some of you were at. I unfortunately was not at. My partner was there. But I believe the questions, one of the questions, main questions was making sure that we do the right thing by the current residents in those 22 units. We will be glad to enter in agreements on making sure that their rent during the time period before this is developed stay reasonable, and that when this gets time to redevelop, they have given plenty of time to divine other housing opportunities and be given some help in getting that accomplished. So, be glad to answer any questions you have. My engineer is here, the developer is here. We can all answer any specific questions that you have. But I appreciate y'all's time very much, and be glad to respond to further questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We had no other speakers sign up to speak either in support or opposition. So at this point, we will close the public hearing and open the case up to council for discussion. And any questions for Mr. Green should be directed to Mr. Green, so.
Be happy to start, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Mr. Green, I guess I, myself and some other fellow council members would like some clarity, and we don't expect that tonight, on if there is a quote-unquote "housing fund" that is going to be, that the applicant's going to participate in, the ability to utilize those funds to perhaps do things like subsidize these folks' rent some other place, because right now, what they're currently paying, and I believe, Mr. Green, aren't there 28 residents there?
I'm not quite sure of the number, sir.
Okay. Somewhere between 22 and 28, but any, the only number I've heard is 28. But to somehow subsidize their rents in other locations throughout the, throughout the region, that would make them whole. And what we need to determine is the period of time that that would be appropriate, you know, using a test of reasonableness in this as well. So that's, that's the main point that I wanted to make. I think the applicant has demonstrated an appetite to participate in a, in a housing fund in some form or fashion. And I think that a really good use of that, of that fund would be to assist those existing renters if they are, and they likely would be displaced. One other option that I hope we could at least talk about would be, you know, if it's possible to do a build-out in phases that would not disrupt any of these 20, I'm going to keep calling it 28, 28 units. In other words, start one building that has, we'll call it a minimum of 28 units, and then move those folks from those homes into those apartments to make way for clearing that land and building out the project. So I would like to, I'd like to explore both of those if we could. All right.
Mr. Green, the drawing that Mr. Huff included in the presentation shows the two points of ingress egress off of Highway 20, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And he also mentioned a possible emergency entrance/exit through the school board property at Teasley. Emergency access, does it count as one of the fire code? Ingress egresses, does it?
No.
Okay. So right now, they're showing the two ingress egress off of Highway 20.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Which would have to be approved by Georgia DOT, correct?
Yes, sir, because of the close proximity to the two points of in and out of the property.
Right, okay. And if they wind up, if they get approval for those, and in those locations or proximate locations, I know there's distance requirements between the two. Who then determines, again, I know there's a lot of traffic on that road already, and it's close to another intersection, the entrance of River Green. Who can, who, would the city have to say so, or Georgia DOT as far as like, you know, ride-in, ride-out only, or, you know, I know trying to get across, you know, two, three lanes to turn left would be, might be an issue, but would that be the city, or would that be?
I believe that would be GDOT.
GDOT, okay.
That would approve those locations that way.
Okay, okay. So they'd be, would have the ultimate approval on both points of ingress egress, and then also sort of the traffic control in and out of the development, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask one follow-up question.
Sure.
A follow-up question to what the mayor was just talking about, and I would like to direct this to Mr. Dyer, our city attorney. As it relates to the number of ingress egresses, I have heard a couple of possibilities, one being it's required to have two public ingress egresses plus an emergency ingress egress. And I've also heard that the requirement would be for one of each. What's the, what's the ruling on that?
So there's two codes that we're dealing with. There's our development code, which requires two entrances. That means two public entrances, actual full entrances. But the development code allows the city council to waive that. And we've done that in other cases, or at least that proposed doing it is, we can choose to let one of those be an emergency only, because the other code is the fire code, which does not require them both to be public access. It's about fire vehicles being able to get in there, and so one of them can be, we call it emergency only, but I mean, it can be designed just for fire trucks, and be gated, and they can put the Knox box and all that on there. So the fire marshal can be satisfied with one public, one emergency. Our code requires two, but you could allow one of them to be emergency. You're allowed to waive the two entrance requirement. We can't waive the fire code, so at a minimum, it needs to have one public access and one emergency.
And ultimately, the thing to remember is the fire code is based upon the diagonal of the property and half of that. So it's a distance base, whereas our development code is more about having two ways in and out for the residents. It's more of a convenience factor. So the fire code's ultimately going to determine where those two points are going to be for this particular project.
And one of the issues with the fire code is the depth of the property. It's quite deep compared to the road frontage, and when you take the diagonal into account, the property frontage does not allow enough room for the two means of ingress egress that the fire code requires. That's something else that Mr. Kula will have to make a decision on, should this get approved when it comes time for land disturbance permits.
Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Green, will either ingress egress have a traffic signal?
I believe that would be up to GDOT to determine that.
Has it been discussed?
Not to my knowledge, but the applicant may have had those discussions with GDOT.
Okay. I'd like to know about if it, if it happens, please.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Green, I have some questions from residents that I said I would just put on record. So, I don't know if you'll have the answers tonight, but would love to get them before our next meeting. Has the developer said for sure that they would not consider dedicating 10% of the units for a certain number of years to reduce, based on AMI? What will happen to the residents who are in the duplexes now? What will happen to their deposits that they put down? And what notice will there be if there's going to be a rent increase in those duplexes if this developer closed on the property and took over? And when will those residents know what it means to keep their rent at a quote "reasonable" rate? And, there are reports of extensive maintenance problems currently in these duplexes, broken appliances, mold issues, water leakage issues. Would this developer fix those? And in what timeframe, and how so, et cetera? Then, could you also clarify what the plans are? There's already a right-turn deceleration lane. What is the plan to increase that? And then is there also a plan on the other side for an acceleration lane? That's all for now.
Mr. Green, a quick question. The Development Service comment says the traffic study is sufficient. Did the applicant provide a traffic study? Is that an existing traffic study?
No, the applicant provided the traffic study.
Okay. Do we know when that traffic study was conducted? What times, what dates?
I don't know, I don't know right offhand, but I can find out.
Could we get that information and make sure it was during school hours and when schools were in session? Mr. Waterman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Green, I received an email today from one of our residents in Ward 3. And one of the questions pointed out was, do you think that the, these units that are potentially to be built, a potential of 600 additional cars possibly, is actually safe for someone trying to turn left going towards downtown Canton? Without any lights, traffic lights, or any other, anything to guide them, to make their trip safe?
Okay.
Also, inquiry about the traffic study, as well as the mayor just pointed out. When was that conducted? Day? Over what period? They would like some more clarification about that. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Looks like you have some homework. Move on to our next case, public hearing discussion for case MPA 2203-010, master plan amendment request to allow for the operation of a brewery in Pod B, a development company referred to as Laurel Canyon. Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor and council members, as was just stated, this is a request to add a brewery as an allowed use in Pod B of the Laurel Canyon Development. Mr. Baggio has looked at a couple of sites here in town. He originally started here at the shopping center, found another site out on Knox Bridge, just on the western end of the city. That deal did not work, and now he is back at Laurel Canyon, and he needs the master plan amendment to have that as a allowed use.
Okay.
Mr. Baggio is here tonight to make his presentation.
Okay. So at this point, we will open public hearing for case MPA 2203-010, and ask the applicant to come speak in support of the project, I assume.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for seeing me. Let me speak before you. My name is Ron Baggio. My wife and I are planning to open a brewery, and it's a small, taproom-only brewery. Won't be doing any distribution in the Laurel Canyon Village Shopping Center on Reinhard Carlet Parkway. Zoning for the property is planned development mixed-use. Zoning for the property is planned development mixed use. A brewery is allowed with a master plan amendment. We'd like to put it before you to vote on it and let it happen. We won't be making any disturbances to anything. The building's already there. Won't be any traffic increase, no large truck traffic, no noise, no offensive odors. We're just looking to open up something small for our neighbors to come and enjoy a beer, conversation, maybe watch a game. Since we've started the process, we've heard only positive input. People seem to be really excited about it. When we did our community input meeting, we had nobody show up. But right after I sent out the letters and they received them, we had one call, someone that couldn't show up for our public input meeting. But they wanted some information. I told them what we were doing. They said it sounded great. They'd love for, love for us to be there so that their residents don't have to drive and then drive home after drinking. And so we hope you'll consider approving this. And I'd like to thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we had no one signed up to speak, either in support or opposition. So we will close the public hearing and open the case up to council for discussion. Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Green, how many storefronts will this brewery take up?
On the application, it's only listed as Suite 100. That's the suite, if you're facing Publix, it's to the far left. It used to be a dry cleaners.
So only one storefront? And will there be any exterior changes? A deck, anything like that?
None has been mentioned in my discussions with Mr. Baggio.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
And none have been discussed with my talks with Mr. Baggio, no ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tullin?
Yes. Mr. Green, if you could find out for us before the next meeting, that would be great. I'm interested in what the annual production forecast is. Also, one of the, one of the things that I've always enjoyed about going to a brewery is the music they play, or, you know, is there going to be music inside? And I know you haven't discussed any exterior features, but I would like to put a finer point on that and find out if there is going to be, if there is either at opening date or at some point in the coming year or two, a plan to expand the seating area to include the outside? And if so, would that include music outside? And then I know this is putting the cart before the horse a little bit, but I'm curious what the applicant has in mind for the interior finishes. And just an editorial comment, I'm thrilled to hear that Laurel Canyon Brewing is now looking to occupy property at Laurel Canyon. I know that was going to be a challenge at the other locations. So welcome back to Laurel Canyon, Mr. Baggio.
Mr. Green or Mr. Peppers, can you remind me breweries that operate under agricultural license? Or what license does that brewery operator under?
It's just a brewer's license. It's a manufacturing license under the alcohol ordinance.
Okay. That's one of the thought, thank you. Other comments, questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. We move on to public hearing and discussion for cases RZ0N 2203-002 and CUP 2204-001. Rezoning and conditional use permit request for 830 and 850 Marietta Road. Mr. Green?
All right. This application originally started out as a rezoning request for 850 Marietta Road. During discussions with Housing and Urban Development Department, they were looking for some financial assistance. And HUD asked for the possibility of doing some quadplex units. And by doing that, that necessitated the filing for the conditional use permit. Originally, the applicant had asked that the rezoning be deferred so that the conditional use permit and the rezoning could be heard at the same time, run concurrently. There will be 24 new living units proposed. Be four quadplexes and four duplexes. Currently, there are two existing homes on the property. Each of those will be renovated into a duplex unit. If this gets approved and once it's finished, it will be consolidated into an existing rental unit complex that the property owner currently has. And when that one was developed, it was anticipated that these properties would be included. There's a drive to get from the existing units to the proposed new units. With this application, they are taking advantage of the concurrent variance allowance that was approved by council. And they are asking for the elimination of the buffer on the south side of the property. This is a 50-foot required buffer when RA8 zone property abuts ORT zone property. They're also asking for an increase in the maximum allowed parking ratio from 2.5 spaces per unit to 3.3. And they're also asking for an increase in the density from eight dwelling units per acre to 8.04. They have also, during the community input meeting, have committed to the installation of a privacy fence along the southern property line in the event that the buffer deletion is approved.
Okay. Thank you. So at this point, we will open the public hearing for cases RZ0N 2203-002 and CUP 2204-001. And we'll ask the applicant to come speak.
Hi, good evening. Melissa Castile, I'm here as the representative for the applicant. And the owner applicant is also here, if we have any questions. Mr. Green did a really good job of providing a summary, but I just provided some exhibits just in case we wanted to refer to them. This particular map here shows the boundaries of the properties. The red being the total assemblage with phase one that's already constructed. And then the two southern pieces in the blue being the two that would be added in. You can see the northern parcel in the blue is already RA8 as well as the existing phase of what we call copper mine duplexes. So the rezoning request is on the southernmost parcel, which is the 850 Marietta. We hope you'll find that this project is in keeping with the Sunnyside roadmap for success, which is quality housing, targeting affordable housing units for workforce and families. So phase one, we feel already does that. So phase two would just expand upon providing those housing units. And as Mr. Green stated, the conditional use permit purely came about as a request in regards to the HUD financing, which does require 50% of the units to be constructed as quadplex units. This request did not change our request for the total number of units. It just is the construction and the assemblage of some of the units into quadplex buildings. So I hope you were able to see from our original request to the addition of the conditional use permit that those units did not go up. And we are asking for that .04, just a little bit above the eight max, simply to just keep that last unit in there and keep our, you know, that unit, we felt like was much, much more valuable to the area than the loss of it, especially considering this property as proposed doesn't exceed the maximum impervious surface requirements. And the remainder of the units will all be duplexes. Regarding the variances, we wanted to make a key point about the buffer. The two zonings are, would be if the lower 850, the most southern parcel was rezoned to RA8. The next parcel at 870 is still ORT. Both of those zonings allow for the different mixtures of attached units, including duplexes and quadplexes. So in, in the end, this parcel being requested for rezoning would actually be a lighter, lesser zoning type than the ORT, which allows for some office and retail uses. So with that being said, we felt like the variance was worthwhile to request because it would do, put a sort of undue hardship on this property, considering both zonings allow the same use. The parking, the request is purely from looking at demand and time over the years of managing projects like this. Finding that the 2.5 is not providing for the multi-generational type users, residents and their guests. So we've actually recently had to come in for a variance on another project where we found that there was a need for more parking. So we wanted to get ahead of that, go ahead and ask for the parking and get that constructed in there and ready to go for these homeowners, or these renters, I'm sorry. So that was just a marginal increase from 2.5 to 3.3. And as Mr. Green noted, and the site plan has been updated to reflect, per public input meeting, the owners agreed to provide a privacy fence and/or combination of screening plantings along the southern property line adjacent to 870 Marietta. So we're here if you have any questions. Thank you. Oh, if we, yeah, this is the updated site plan for you.
Did have three residents sign up to speak. Are any of those here to speak in support? Okay. We'll move on to, how many, how much time?
Five minutes and 40 seconds remaining for, for the applicant.
So applicant would have five minutes and 40 seconds to rebut if they so wish. But we'll now ask those who want to speak in opposition to the project. Mr. Tom Hill, and if you'd come forward and state your name clearly into the microphone and your address, please.
My name is, I'm Tom Hill, reside at 938 Evans Cook Road. And I'm here on behalf of my mother-in-law, Mary Jack, who resides at 870 Marietta Highway. I want to speak, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. And I want to speak to one aspect of this rezoning request. And that is the elimination of the buffer between 850 and 870 on the south side of 850. The applicant has provided an updated site plan to go with the privacy fence and a screening, planting, year-round visual screening, which is better than no buffer. I agree with that. But the requirement for buffer, what came about because the applicant made a request for rezoning. And now is asking for relief from that request. And the argument that the rezoning request is a lighter density than the potential office use of 870. I, I personally don't find that to be a real compelling argument. It, the 870 is a residential property. It's a single-family residential property. And any property has a potential for any other use in accordance with the applicable zoning requirements for that property. So my, my request is that you deny the request for the elimination of the buffer. And as an alternative of the screening fence and screening was discussed at the public participation meeting, and I discussed that with them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thomas Weaver?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver, and I reside at 131 Old Marietta Road here in Canton, Georgia. And my residence is located within 1,000 linear feet of the project. I did receive notification from the, from the applicant in the mail and became aware of this proposal. My main concern is traffic. I think Marietta Road's stressed out. You've already put and approved, the council has approved, townhomes at the top of the hill. You have another project slated for your consideration this evening for an additional 124 residences at the bottom of the hill. You got more apartments now that this applicant wants to place. Marietta Road is a two-lane road. The infrastructure for Marietta Road and the Sunnyside portion of our community, I do not believe adequately handle the traffic. The applicant, at least in this particular project, concedes the point that there will be more traffic. Previous applicants for other developments refused to acknowledge the fact in their, in their applicant, or their application paperwork. This applicant at least concedes the fact, and indeed, as evidenced by the fact that they want to change their site plan to include more parking spaces because they're going to need more vehicles to be put in there for all the families that would like to move into these new apartments if this plan is ultimately approved by council. As I've shared before with council, I'll reiterate these thoughts on second occasion. It is a good thing whenever anyone wants to make an investment in our community. And indeed, an approbation of council's approved roadmap for success, one of the chief tenets of that, is to create quality and affordable housing. And I know that this council has made great strides in that course. And I know that this council will continue to do so. But a full reading of that says to do so responsibly. The applicant and the applicant's architects are not going to be the ones fielding traffic accidents. They're not going to be the ones figuring out how to widen roads or install traffic lights, or this, that, or the other when it comes to our highways and our roads that our city, our community maintains. I just would ask council to stop just packing in apartments and townhomes on two-lane roads and just splicing in and tetrising blocks around that can make it fit just for the sake of approving things because the traffic is getting outrageous. It's outrageous enough as it is. I don't know how many more vehicles that this proposal would seek to add, but it's just too many, and I don't think Marietta Road can handle. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bob Banks?
Mayor and council, good evening. My name's Bob Banks. I live at 810 East Main Street here in Canton. I also would like to oppose the zoning and the conditional use permit for this particular property. I travel Marietta Road going and coming home in the evening, and it is a busy place to be, in particular with families using sidewalks to and from the intersection down there where 140 comes in, near the Chevron station. The current development that's there, that copper mine phase one, is all duplexes. And they do have a parking problem there. So I understand them requesting additional parking. It's obvious it would be needed, especially if they're anticipating multi-generational use of those units. So that would certainly be a concern. And I understand that, that there may be a concern trying to get HUD financing, but that really, I hope, won't be part of the decision here. The duplexes that are there in copper mine phase one, if the zoning goes through, I think continued duplex usage there on phase two would make sense as well. Also in Ward Three, which is where this is being developed, is the Jackie Moore Lane project. It looks like that's going to be addressed pretty aggressively at some point in time. That'll probably bring about 250 units of apartments, multifamily online. Also, the property there at Misty Way and Misty Court, someone's pursuing that pretty aggressively, as we heard tonight. That's another 296 apartment units there in Ward Three. Also here in Ward Two in downtown Canton, I understand we're already approved for some 530 apartment units right near the mill at Edouard, and also at Academy and Main Street. I think we're going to put plenty of stress, plenty of load on our current services and systems, including school and firefighters and police and so forth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. That's all our, all we had signed up to speak in opposition with applicant. That's all our, all we had signed up to speak in opposition with applicant like to spend the remaining time? Any remaining time?
I guess addressing traffic, we feel like this application is in keeping with the study and intent of the Sunny Side Roadmap for Success, as was mentioned. So the target was to add additional housing units. This is twenty-two additional more units. With respect to the concerns about overall traffic, I feel like that the city of Canton's done a really good job of looking at how to target infill, if you want to call it, or density levels in maybe the downtown core. Now, this is a little outside of the downtown core, but looking at more density towards the downtown area and then going out, and this fits into that model. So we, just looking at the, again, back at the original studies for the project, feel it meets that intent. It's not outside of, you know, going into an estate area or something like that and wanting to add a bunch of density in. And just going back to the request for the buffer, I was hoping I could find the density requ, do you know what the density maximum is for residential and O R T? Okay. I'm sorry, I don't have that information here, but I can find it for, for you guys and send it over. But I'm just looking at comparison and density that could potentially be put into the O R T versus R A eight. Looking at the uses, yes, the current use Jason is a single-family. But it just impacts the overall potential use of this property to maintain that fifty-foot buffer, which would still be put on the, the piece that's already zoned R A eight. So either way, there's a piece of this project that's going to be impacted by fifty feet, being mitigated hopefully with the fencing and with other plantings. The actual existing home on eight fifty is in that fifty-foot buffer as well, so that home would be there. So if the buffer isn't approved, we'd be looking at amending the site plan to accommodate keeping the existing home where it is within the buffer, and then arranging the parking May provide you all some other feedback on these requests and comments prior to the next hearing. Thank you.
We will close, close the public hearing and open up for council discussion. Ms. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we use the slides that the applicant brought? And can we pull up the site plan, the amended site plan? Which of these units are existing and which units are new?
On the left-hand side, the two units at the bottom, they are both currently single-family homes. They will be expanded to be duplex units.
And everything else is already there, except for increased parking?
No.
No. Just the upper part exists now.
Okay.
It's the bottom in half.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. And then where is the buffer in question that the concerned residents were talking about, which?
On the bottom property line, that would be the area that would be required to have the fifty-foot buffer.
What is it now? Well, is it woods, is it?
I believe it's just open space right now.
So right now it's open space?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the proposal is to add a privacy fence and landscape privacy plantings?
That's what the applicant has committed to, yes, ma'am.
And then I would just throw out, this is my personal opinion, I know this would probably come to the design review committee, but I'd love to see something that didn't look so much like offices and looked more like homes as far as the architecture on the outside goes.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Tullman?
Yes. So the applicant mentioned that it's going to speak to, the project's going to speak to affordable housing, and I would like to know in what percentage of A M I their target is, number one. And then number two, just a comment about, I think Mr. Banks brought up the, the potential of multi-generational families living together. I would argue that that's a big plus, and I think we're seeing a trend across the country of more multi-generational families. And if that's the case in this particular development, I would see that as very much a positive. So thank you.
Ms. McGrew?
Mr. Green, would you remind me, please, how many units are in this application?
In this application, there are twenty-two new units. There are two existing single-family homes that will be expanded to duplex units for a total of twenty-four.
Has a traffic study been done?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Has one been done in the recent past for this area?
Have we had one?
Jackie Moore Lane rezoned and in Marietta Road rezoned up Marietta Road from this subject property, which went through zoning process two years ago, if I'm not mistaken. There were traffic studies that were contained within both of those applications, and they addressed those projects that the level of service aid, is it the existing level of service, most two projects, it would just say it's a level of service aid. That's my recollection, that there were, that's done in both.
Okay. I'd like to know, Mr. Green, staff's opinion if this will affect traffic badly, if we would remain an A in that road area.
I was going to ask about the traffic study as well, so we're, we're in accord. What, I guess if staff can extrapolate it all from the previous traffic studies from Jackie Moore up at ten-ten, if we can get an idea for what's down this way. If not, can we know that ahead of the meeting? Is that something we need to make a condition or talk about further?
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll get with Bethany on that.
And are there currently any other plans? I know we have the, the one that's down the hill, and we have Jackie Moore, the piece that's up the hill. Anything else in this, the, I would think of that as the old neighborhood in Sunny Side? Any other development coming into that area that's been applied for in the works?
There's none that I'm aware of. The property to the south side is not owned by the applicant. The next parcel over is owned by Mr. Latimer. So at some point in time, he may be looking to develop that into another rental community. I don't know, but that's a possibility.
And if I'm reading this right, I'd like to think that I am, we're talking about one entrance and exit for this, which is certainly within our codes, but the control device is just a stop sign. And is there a deceleration lane at all coming down Marietta Highway?
No, sir.
I don't recall right now. I don't think there's one.
No, sir, there is not.
And there are no plans to add anything there?
I doubt that this, a development would warrant a, a deceleration lane, but I can also get with Ms. Watson on that as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Schmidt?
Is this complex run by a property management company or an individual? Can we find out before the next meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Green. That concludes our public hearings. We've had a request before we move into our business meeting for a five-minute recess bio break, so we will resume at seven oh five.
If you could be seated, we'll resume the meeting now?
We'll enter into our business meeting now with a consideration to prove the minutes. You have in your packet the draft meeting minutes for our meeting from May nineteenth. Any changes, revisions, motions?
I'm Mr. McGrew.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. We have a few informational items this evening. Item A is twenty-twenty-two first quarter uniform crime report. Chief Mayorville, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. And so it's the first quarter in one month on the crime report. For the last two council sessions, I've been trying to schedule to do this, but because of the RMS system that we currently have, we weren't able to do that. So this is an ongoing commercial thanking you all for the new RMS system that we will have in six months. We, it got down to me saying, if we have to hand-pull them, we'll hand-pull them, but I promised I'd go twice in front of council. So here I am, first quarter in one month. So on, on the first quarter in one month, what we see is an increase in violent crime, but again, we don't want to see an increase by one case, as a police department, as a city, but our numbers are so low that when there is a slight increase, then it has a huge percentage that we see there. What we're seeing on the violent crime, when you, when you talk about the aggravated assaults, is almost all of which are family violence cases. There has been new code sections for the aggravated assault that include strangulation. There has been a great deal of training with our officers by the district attorney's office over the last few months. The, what this comes from is a great, oftentimes during domestic violence, one of the people will grab the other people by the neck. Prior to this distinction of aggravated assault, which is a felony, strangulation, that would have probably been handled as a simple battery or simple assault misdemeanor. With the new legislation on strangulation, it is now a felony and it's aggravated assault. There's a great deal of training that our officers have received from the district attorney's office as to how to document the evidence of a strangulation, whether it be just red marks in the neck, to include even going back a couple of days later with the victim to take other pictures because the bruising is usually more observable a couple of days later. So that's what we're seeing on this, and unfortunately, when it comes to violence related to family violence, there's not a proactive enforcement that law enforcement can take. What is important is that there is a reactive enforcement that law enforcement takes, that law enforcement does what they should do on the scene when they're there, that they identify a suspect, and that they remove that suspect from that location and make an arrest, and that also that they provide the victims with the resources they need as far as how to work the way through the judicial system and whatever counseling or resources they need. And we have a whole protocol that we do on that. So that's what we're seeing in the violent crime situations. When we get down to our property crimes, we have a reduction in a lot of the items. But just to, to kind of show the example of non-forced burglaries, we had zero in twenty-one. I think that's mainly because a lot of people were home in twenty-twenty-one and working from home. But in twenty-twenty-two, we've had four, so because of four, it's a four-hundred percent increase. So that's just an example of how very small numbers make percentages kind of jump up on us. Overall, and as you see, a lot of our property crimes, shoplifting is down fifty-three percent. And I, I'll tell you that shoplifting goes up and down really dependent upon what the stores are doing. If the stores, and they, it's periodically, it's up and down every few months, they will get, decide they're going to be very, very serious about shoplifting, they'll put extra security in there, we see more cases when that happens. Or at some points, they're, they're not putting that there. So that's kind of dependent on, on the stores, and then we follow up once that they make the cases. So overall, we're down one percent from all crimes. The, our citations are down. There's a couple of reasons, I think, for that. One of those reasons is a great deal of our citations were wrote in the school zones. And we have help with that now, and that was actually one, one of the advantages of Red Speed, is it frees police officers to not be in the school zones. So I think that's, that's one of it. And then the other is, like every police department in this country, we're, we're running short on manpower. I don't know a police department that's not. I don't know a law enforcement C E O that won't tell you that there is issues right now keeping officers, and there's certainly issues hiring officers, and it's a national issue. The, I think the last thing I want to talk about, and I have to say, a great example of citizens and government coming together, Mr. Bob Banks, this afternoon, gave me a call. He had looked at our stats online and said, I think you're wrong on your calls for services. And he was right, we were wrong. So a correction to twenty-twenty-one should be nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven, and, which would be down twenty percent. The, again, that goes because our calls for service also include all our traffic stops. So if the traffic stops are down, then that's going to affect calls for service. That's, that's my report, Mr. Mayor, council.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Mayor? Or, Mr. Carlin?
Just one, Chief. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
When, this is an excellent report, it always is, is there anything we can do to look at what cases are referred to CID and then what our closeout rate is? Anything like that, something you can bring back to us? And maybe not in the, maybe not next week, I know we have the records issued, but sometime in the future, if that's something I think we have some interest in, we're having a discussion about it.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, what information would you be looking for?
Looking at things that are referred for further investigation, and then kind of an idea of our closeout. I know we have what we do as far as arrests, but then as far as our, what gets referred over, and then how we're dealing with that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we have, we have a protocol of how cases are assigned to criminal investigation, what elements need to be there, what factors are there, do they have any solvability factors to it? Sometimes it's based on solvability factors. We have a protocol, these solvability factors. Sometimes it's the significance of the crime, too, because you may have a significant crime, but there is no solvability factor. It's seen, it still goes into investigation for active, but yes, sir, we could absolutely do that.
Or any context you want to add into that's always welcome. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Chief, a couple of questions for you. You mentioned manpower.
Yes, sir.
With current staffing, how many officers would you need to add to feel comfortable?
At this point, sir, I don't think adding is a problem, it's filling the positions that we have.
Open, open.
Yes, sir. If we, if we filled the positions that we have, I think the way we currently are going, we're fine. As, as growth goes, as years go, like every place else, then we would, and there's, there's actually a I A C P formula for how we decide how many officers we should. It goes by how many calls, you have to find out how many minutes and hours you're spending on calls, population, there's, there's a lot of different factors, but there's an actual formula for that. But a long way of answering your question is, I feel very comfortable if we felt, filled our positions right now, we, we would be adequate.
And, and how many do you have open?
We have nine positions open right now.
And just for my information, when we have applicants here for, to build housing apartments, like we heard here tonight, at what point would you get involved?
We are involved.
When determining if the, the area is, you know, adequately manned?
Yes, sir. We, we are, we have a representative in all the development meetings that they have on the Wednesdays, and when they go over the different plans, the different things, it's going to come in front of council and mayor. We have a representative in there that gives input.
Thank you, Chief.
Anything else? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Next, we have the review of the April twenty-twenty-two. Next, we have the review of the April 2022 financials. Finance Director, Ms. Forrester.
Good evening. I'm going to highlight just a few significant events that occurred in April and then wrap up with some of our largest expenses as we work to build the fiscal year 2023 budget. So in April, all of our ARPA funds received to date were transferred to the general fund per the Treasury standard allowance. You'll remember we voted on that last month. So if you're looking at cash balances, you'll see ARPA now has zero. The Hotel Motel Tax Fund transferred all budgeted disbursements to the city's component units and to third parties this month. And additional disbursements will probably be required later this fiscal year. So those are to Canton Tourism, Canton Main Street, the Chamber, and the Historical Society. We made our second biannual debt service payment on the 2021 water and sewer bonds this month in the amount of $2,354,000. And moving on to the expenditures overall and during the year. In fiscal year 2021, just to let you know, the Finance Department processed 3,435 payments to 595 vendors. That's not including payroll. Any scan of the budget, you'll see that water and sewer infrastructure and operations are the city's largest expenditures. Employee salaries are the second largest component of our budget. The third largest recipient of City of Canton funds is the Cherokee County Board of Commissioners. If you'll recall, that is because of our fire mileage rate, which is 3.292. And a reminder, that is 61% of our 5.4 property tax mileage rate. In essence, the city operates on a 2.1 mileage rate, and they have done so for the last five years. The Cherokee County Board of Commissioners also receives our fire impact fees, which last year was a little over $345,000, $46,000. The fourth largest recipient of the city's money is Waste Disposal Services. So that'll be interesting to keep in mind as Nathan speaks later this evening. Fifth largest payment is to the IRS. A lot of people don't think that governments pay federal taxes, but the city and its employees do. Last year, we spent over 1 point, well, we sent over $1.7 million in income, social security, and Medicare taxes to the federal government. We also spend a lot of money on electricity with Georgia Power, combined over $1.6 million. And the remaining top 10 expenses have to do with medical insurance and pension and retirement cost. In essence, that's the summary of our most expensive items. I'll return to the podium later this evening. If you have any questions for me now or then.
Questions for Ms. Forrester? Thank you. Always enjoy the information. We enjoy the revenues more than the expenses, but that's great. As long as there are more. So thank you, Ms. Forrester.
Bears twitching.
Next, we have two technical reports for information only, not for discussion. They'll be discussed at upcoming meetings. Item C, MPA 2205-001 and CUP 2205-002, Master Plan Amendment and Conditional Use Permit for Pod J of Riverstone for the construction of a 172-unit townhome development. Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as noted, this is just for information only. The next staff report that you will receive will contain the, the technical reports, the comments from the staff, engineering, utility services, fire and safety. As you noted, this is a master plan amendment to allow townhomes as in a permitted use in Pod J of Riverstone. Currently, they are permitted for office and commercial uses. And they're looking to build 172 townhomes, hence the CUP requirement for the attached units. So the next report you get on that will have more meat and potatoes with it.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Then item D, again, for information only, Unified Development Code, possible amendments.
Currently, we have four items advertised for public hearing next month. One, let's see if I can remember them. We want to allow, in the RA8, a district, allow that as a conditional use for multifamily. I'm trying to think. I wrote them down and I left them upstairs. Mr. Patton, you remember which ones we have advertised?
One of the advertisements is in regard to the table of uses to allow townhomes as a permitted use, a conditional use within the RM15 zoning district, which is our ARPA zoning district. Another of the amendments involves proposed changes to the design standards. Even with OHSIC, many of those were discussed with UDC, and they recommended those come before the city council and then advertise the public hearing on the 16th.
Thank you. Look forward to discussing those. Have any other announcements? I think Ms. Schmidt, you have one, I know.
Oh, yes, thank you. I just wanted to share that our artist for the newest mural in town is finishing up. And we're going to be having a block party style ribbon cutting ceremony on Tuesday, June 21st, from 11:30 to 1:00. The police department's going to be handing out hot dogs. Bananas and beehives is going to be handing out flour cookies. And I'm sure there's going to be some other surprises in there, but everyone is welcome to attend.
Great. Look forward to that. Any other announcements? Okay. No one signed up for public input this evening. We'll move into old business. Item A, discussion and possible action on case MP2110-002, request for master plan approval for 33.23 acres along Dr. John T. Pettit, Longview, and Cherokee Streets for the development of a 124 residential unit subdivision. Mr. Green?
All right. This is a master plan that has been a long time in the works. It started at the latter part of 2021. Mr. Beecham has been working with the staff. He originally had some low-impact development expectations to develop this. He has reduced his number of units to 124. And as you stated, there will be single-family detached homes. In the last staff report that was sent out by the staff, we recommended approval with six conditions. And for the record, I will read them off. There was two corrections on number two and number six. The first one, the development be limited to a maximum of 124 single-family detached homes. Number two has been amended. Mr. Patton and I had some discussion this morning, and we would like to change that one to the minimum lot size shall be 3,150 square feet. This is based on the submitted site plan, which indicates that the lots will be 45 feet by 70 feet. Number three, the development standards for the City of Canton shall be adhered to for the construction of this project. These shall include, but are not limited to, street designation, construction, green infrastructure, and adherence to all adopted codes. Number four, owner developer shall pay $500 per unit, as agreed upon with the Board of Education. That is their mitigation fee. Number five, the native plant rescue society shall be allowed access to the property prior to any land disturbance to search for and rescue any endangered native plant species. And then number six has been changed due to a conversation that the developer, Mr. Patton, had this morning. And it will read, the developer shall contribute $100,000 to the affordable housing initiative. Owner developer shall pay a $800 contribution with each building permit. This contribution is in accordance with the applicant's email on June 2nd, 2022, which is what he sent back to Mr. Patton this morning.
So if I understand you correctly, the conditions that were submitted to us in the packet, the only one that has changed since one received was the minimum lot size?
No, number two and number six have been reworked.
Right, right. And number six, right, correct.
Yes, sir.
And number two was changed, minimum lot size from 5,000 square feet, you're suggesting be reduced to?
3,150.
Okay. I know there were, Development Services also had some conditions for consideration. Have those been resolved, do you know, or?
Uh, no, sir.
I think one involving the intersection improvements, the infiltration ditches and the flood study.
The conditions from Development Services, they have not, they have not been addressed. I can ask the applicant here, he's here tonight, if he's in agreement with those and those can be added.
Okay. Okay. Comments, question, Schmidt?
Well, I have a question for Mr. Green.
Ms. Watson has stated that the flood study will be required regardless as part of the land disturbance permit. And if the, if it's approved by, let's see, the condition number three that I read, then the infiltration ditch has become a moot point because those were part of his low-impact development request.
Okay, okay.
Did you ask for the traffic study as well?
That's what I was about to ask.
I'll let Ms. Schmidt answer.
Let's let Ms. Schmidt answer.
Well, I know that a traffic study was completed, but could you quickly share what, what does the traffic study show? What's going to be done to these roads, if anything?
I'll let Ms. Watson answer that. That's her expertise.
The, in summary, the only issue with the development and its impact to traffic would be at the intersection of John T. Pettit and Marietta Road. It said that in the future that a traffic signal may be warranted. I did talk to Steve about possibly having contribut, contributes to that in escrow, but I don't know what, if that was talked about.
I think what we ultimately came down to, or what I had thought about in my mind is, first of all, the units are going to be paying impact fees. But second of all, this is part of the tax allocation district. So ultimately, that increased tax value of the project would generate more than what they're going to be contributing as it relates to that particular signal. And we don't really know what the improvements in that area would need to be and at what time they would need to be installed.
Would, would the applicant be required, for instance, if there are any improvements on John T. Pettit, you know, for entrances into the subdivision, turn lanes or anything, they would be required to, to pay for those, correct, or?
Yes, correct. So, and, and that would be part of what's in the development code as far as what would be required to, if a decel lane or a left turn lane would be required. It would be based on what's in the development.
So that'd be the developer's responsibility, so which seems more, more appropriate, I think, so, okay. Mr. Carlin?
Mr. Green, we had a public hearing on this, and I know we've slept a few times since then. But it was earlier this year, was it January, February? Do you recall?
It was either January or February. I'm not sure.
Your memory is no, no worse than mine.
And the applicant was given the 90 days to address the concerns.
Gotcha. And I know we don't, we may not have a lot of residents. We had some residents interest before. They came and spoke at that hearing. Now things have changed a good bit. Is there a requirement that we have this vote tonight, tonight? Or is it a situation where we have up against our 90 days and we, we'd have to extend it or anything? If we wanted to give an opportunity for this to kind of get out in the public a little bit more, make sure we get some feedback from residents before coming back and?
I mean, this was a, we, we postponed it for 90 days, so we weren't. And I think the code allows us to do that. The next extension would have to be agreed to by the applicant. I think is the way it works. Or the applicant can ask for it and we can, I don't remember exactly what we did, but.
I guess my concern is we have, we've had a lot of changes to this. And I don't necessarily want it to be a situation where nothing had to be advertised for today, no notice had to go out. If I'm wrong about that, tell me, but.
No, the public hearing was advertised and the request for deferral was granted by the mayor and council for the 90 days. So there was not an advertising requirement for the action meeting.
I know we had things changing as late as this morning to, as far as these conditions, what this was going to look like.
Yes, sir.
I'd certainly be interested in exploring that.
Well, we, we did, we had the public hearing, so it's not like, Mr. Dyer can correct me if I'm wrong, that we could have public commentary, but for instance, the council may be interested, like, we discuss it tonight, we look at these things. If we have any questions for Mr. Green to, to find out from the applicant between now and the next meeting and, and consider voting on at the next meeting, the public could still email questions to us or the Development Department that, that, that they may have. I think would increase their awareness a little bit more. That, that's a consideration you may want to consider, but.
I mean, maybe if there's nothing, because a lot of the concerns were about the low-impact development and that's what's been taken off the table.
Exactly, so.
I just want to, in the interest of transparency and making sure that we're communicating well.
Right.
As long as we're not in Dutch with any of the other rules.
But I think the question about, you know, are we in compliance with the 90 days is a good one. So we don't want to.
I, I was just trying to look up. I'm not, I don't think master plan amendments would be under that time requirement. They are?
Considered as our decision by text and by vote code and that 90-day limitation would come into play. City council did not table this. The applicant would have to approve of that or make a decision.
Right. So you either have to decide, or, I mean, what the ordinance says, the applicant may request a postponement beyond three months, subject to our approval, so.
Are you saying that we, we have to make a decision tonight, or could 90 days include, could we?
Well, we're way past 90 days anyway on the master plan, aren't we? I mean, if it was applied in February, we're way past that. So, I mean, we just tabled it from February till now, which we could do.
Ms. Schmidt?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say that I would definitely agree with Mr. Carlin's point about making sure we're transparent and that all the residents know what's going on. Just that in this case, most of the changes are in favor of what the residents told us they wanted. So I, I just feel like I don't think there's a big announcement that needs to be made, except that we listen to you. So. Um, so, I think, I think we're okay.
And we did, we did approve, you know, the zoning, residential zoning, and, and council stated that they wanted residential in the area. I think some, most of the concerns were about the low impact and then the green infrastructure. I think if, if we did consider the conditions that, that, uh, community development has offered, such as would comply with the city codes, I mean, I think that covers, that would cover most, everything that, uh, those citizens would be concerned of because it would be, you know, uh, if it goes forward, it'd be, have to be constructed like any other development would be constructed, so, but.
We would still be within the three months at the June sixteenth meeting, because the action was on February seventeenth.
Okay. So, thank you for.
What was it?
Diligence over there.
No, March seventeenth. So, I am so confused now. It's June, we're in the fourth.
It is June.
I, I, I got it, I mean, I understand why it's all been postponed, but if we're trying to comply with this ordinance, we are already out of compliance. That's what I said earlier, we're already beyond three months, there were good reasons for it.
Right.
Because we didn't have all the information we needed at the time.
Exactly.
So, but trying to cram back into that ordinance now is not going to work.
Not going to work.
Because we're already out of compliance.
Makes sense.
It's, it's my difficulty.
I got you.
Right, right.
Don't want to cause, don't want to cause the attorney any difficulty, I understand that.
Too late.
Mr. Green, would you, could you inquire the applicant if he wants, if he would consent and agree to let us vote on this on the sixteenth, after opportunity, to make sure we speak with some residents? Thank you.
Mr. Beecham, would you allow that for this to go forward to June sixteenth? He is nodding his head in agreement.
We solved, we solved the problem.
Thank you.
Reducing problems for the attorney, always good. Thank you, sir, and thank you, Mr. Beecham.
Mr. Green, the, the master plan we have that you, someone put on our, in front of us, is this, has this changed since the original master plan, or is it the same?
It's, uh, it's changed a little bit in that he got rid of, when he reduced his number of units down to a hundred and twenty-four, some of the, uh, obviously, uh, houses were removed from the plan, but that's the plan that has been before you for the last, uh, two or three months.
Okay. It is the one we looked at in the last meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's a public hearing, this is the same plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that to make sure that, you know, the public hearing, the residents looked at the same master plan that we're looking at now for a potential approval, so.
Then I would move to table until the next June meeting, the sixteenth?
To, to take a vote, to take action on?
To take action on this?
Go ahead.
A second.
We have a, so we have a motion, I, I don't know that we need to build them, but let's do it, we have a motion a second to, to take action on this at the next meeting, uh, is there any further discussion on that particular item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nae. All members voted for the motion. Are there other questions or discussion about the case, though?
I think the minute should reflect that Ms. Wilson did not vote because she walked in. Thank you.
I do have a, a comment, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
So, the applicant, you know, through the process until recently, was, was trying to position this, this development to include, uh, low-impact features, which I totally commend the applicant for. And, you know, because of some topogra- topography issues, it was not, you know, feasible for that to take place, and I would just encourage this applicant and any other future applicants, where there aren't the topographical challenges to, uh, to bring low-impact developments to us, because we were very excited about the notion of low-impact. Our, our, I think some of our trepidation came at, at some of the, you know, the undulations, undulations in, in that particular piece of property, so.
Yeah. I, I do want to thank the developer for its patience and thank our team for working with the developer and working through some of these issues. Uh, you know, to have, I was just asking our city manager this week, when was the last time we had a, you know, a, a large, single-family development down in the city? I think it was ninety-nine, oh.
Moss Point.
Yeah, Moss Point, uh, so, uh, it's, it's exciting, and exciting especially that, that we're looking at something downtown and something of this quality, so I think the main issue is we want to make sure that our, our residents know that, that we're addressing their concerns and that they're just fully informed, uh, and hopefully that they know that we listen to them, most importantly, so, um, but, uh, I think, I think that's a wise move, so. Any further questions or comments? Okay, thank you. So we tabled item B to a future meeting, so we will move into new business now. Item A, discussion of special purpose local option sales tax, SPOST economic and development transfer, Ms. Forster.
In November twenty twenty-one, council approved the purchase of three hundred and twenty-four point two-six acres of land surrounding the Hickory Log Creek Reservoir. This purchase was made with available cash from the general fund and the water and sewer fund. We're ask- asking for approval to transfer three million dollars from the SPOST seven fund to the general fund, because we anticipate that a portion of this purchase will be used for economic development. The original fiscal year twenty twenty-two SPOST budget did include a three million dollar allocation for economic development. No action is requested tonight, but we will be asking for a motion to approve a transfer from the SPOST seven fund to the general fund for reimbursement of the purchase of this land in the amount of three million dollars. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions for Ms. Forster? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, discussion of the city sanitation services, proposals received and recommendations, Mr. Ingram.
Mayor and council, good evening.
Good evening.
If you recall, a couple of weeks back, Councilor Carlin, as chair of the sanitation review committee, brought forth a, his final, the sanitation committee's final report for your review in anticipation of tonight. Just quickly to summarize, I certainly don't want to steal any thunder from our presenter, which I'll introduce. But the sanitation review committee, after reviewing the proposals as received as part of the RF, sanitation RFP that we issued earlier this year, are recommending to engage Waste Pro, starting services October first of this year, for sanitation services for our residents in City of Canton. The rates that Waste Pro has provided to us, to the city, is eighteen dollars and twenty-four cent per month for residential rate, uh, curbside service, sixteen dollars and eighty-four cent for a senior rate for curbside service, and then nine dollars and ninety cent per month for bi-weekly recycling. Um, it's my pleasure to have, uh, to introduce Mr. Bob Walk, he is a representative from Waste Pro to the stand, he's got a very short presentation for you and an introduction, and then after his introduction, we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. Mr. Bob Walk, thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about our company. Uh, we are Waste Pro of Georgia, started in Athens, Georgia, a little over twenty years ago, and currently now we are the largest privately-owned solid waste collection and recycling company in the southeast. Uh, we operate in ten states in the southeast, but you can get a feel for our Georgia footprint right here. Uh, we build our business model on, uh, three main ideas, which is to provide the best equipment, hire the best people, and have a passion for customer service. Services we offer are residential and commercial, solid waste collection, recycling, and industrial waste collection. I've provided here my contact information, as well as our local vice president, who would be in direct management of your account, uh, just in case you need to get in touch with us. Little bit of information about what's being proposed, you can see there the, the, the rates, uh, also some questions that come up. Uh, we will have available online bill pay if residents would like to do it, if they want to pay quarterly, or if they want to pay annually, that's all available. Um, routing, we have not yet received, uh, uh, you know, full address list from the city, but we're going to attempt to mirror the routes as closely as we can to what exists now, to minimize any transitional issues for your residents. Uh, also, additional carts, some people are more avid recyclers than others, and there will be a, a, an avenue for that if the resident should choose that. Yeah. Also, around the holidays, we understand that after Christmas, after, you know, New Year's, a lot of times the very next collection day is a little heavy. We've been doing this a while, we know that happens, it's calculated into our formula, so rest assured there. A little bit about our communication process, uh, both as we transition and after the transition, uh, we like to use some startup brochures that we send out to residents, uh, call blasts to announce any changes, so if, uh, something comes up while the collection's being done and we've got to make a change, we use automated systems to get phone calls and texts out to our residents, uh, door hangers for, um, you know, let's say, uh, we come up and there's something out there that shouldn't be out there and we need to let the resident, hey, here's, here's what the rule is. And I've provided some examples to Mr. Ingram for y'all to look, what, what those look like, and they're just examples, we're going to customize them to your community, but these are from other communities, so you get an idea of what it looks like. We also use a web-based tracking system called TrackEase that monitors all incoming service requests and complaints. Once the, uh, si- once it's logged into the system, it cannot be deleted, starts a clock, we measure ourselves again against that on how quickly we resolve issues, and we can provide that reporting to the city, uh, monthly or whatever period, to show, hey, this is where we're trending, how are we improving, are we, do we have areas we need to work on, to keep, hold ourselves accountable there. Okay, a little bit about our equipment. What we're proposing is the use of ninety-five gallon carts for both services. The reason we increased to the ninety-five on the recycle service was because now that we're going every other week, we wanted to make sure residents had that additional volume to put their recycles out, since they're not going to be collected every week. Vehicles, we'll be using two types of vehicles, the rear loaders, uh, those will be used in the tight areas where the city provides information that they, that an automated system is not wanted or cannot work, and then the rest of the areas will automate. Maintenance is something we take very seriously, particularly, uh, the inspection of our hoses. We use a hose armor that is wrapped around the actual hose to protect from rubbing and also catch any oils, oils that may burst out of the inner hose, catches it in the outer hose. And, uh, the inspections range from very technical overnight, where we do an inch-by-inch inspection of the hoses, all the way down to a very simple sort of a dumb-and-dumber approach, where we just visually look under the truck, make sure that nothing's leaking. We usually do that in the pre-trips before we go out, make sure that we're there. All right, transition and startup, uh, we have three phases, there'd be a preparation phase that I'll be working very closely, our transition team with yours, gathering information, making sure that we have an accurate address list, um, any GPS or parcel information that we can get, so that we know exactly where all homes are, and that way we can reach out to them. There'll be a procurement and purchasing phase, uh, for trucks and carts, uh, we'll identify a staging area that, uh, the city approves, so that we can move our equipment in and kind of distribute from there. Uh, then we'll start the rollout, take a few weeks to get stuff out, carts in every resident, and then there'll be a follow-up phase where we're following routes with extra management for a little while, just to make sure everybody's doing the right thing, on track, and we'll regroup, make sure that we've got everything working properly, and then we'll slowly let the local management take over. That's a little, that's all I really have for you, but I am open to questions, I thank you again for the opportunity to share a little bit about Waste Pro.
Thank you, Mr. Walk. Okay, I want to thank.
Our committee thinks it was great.
Yeah, I get, I was wanting to thank the committee, uh, uh, and for your hard work, and, uh, of course, Mr. Ingram and the team, uh, you know, a lot, we know how much went into this, and so we appreciated, uh, the solutions and bringing the solutions back to us, so thank you guys for your hard work and issues also. Ms. Schmidt, did you?
Thank you. Um, no pressure, guys, but I live in the largest HOA neighborhood in the city limits of Canton, and this sounds so good, it almost brings a tear to my eye. So, I hope it's all true, um, just based on our past experiences. Um, I do wonder, one of the major things that people, um, get upset about is what happens when there is a leak on one of our residential streets. What's that process look like? And will we have to argue about getting it cleaned up?
Let me introduce you to, uh, Jerry Harrison, Division Vice President of this North Georgia area, will also be directly involved in management, and, uh, he can explain a little bit about that mitigation process as it happens.
I'll, I'll back up if I can and, and go through our process, uh, our truck inspection process. Every morning, we have a supervisor mechanic, uh, there with the driver, they pull through a shop, we inspect it for leaks, nothing goes out if it's leaking, I can assure you of that, it's not worth it to us. Um, we, we'll figure out a different way to cover the route, spare truck, whatever. Also, every day when the trucks come in, they're inspected, same thing, we have a supervisor or operations, someone in operations, usually the supervisor or myself, a mechanic and the driver goes over the truck, hey, how'd you do it, everything's good, no leaks, no problems, no, you know, everything's working like it should. Um, so that's every day, you know, five days a week, so you don't have to worry about. What, what you find in, in this, and, and look, I've been doing this for thirty years, but what you find in this is, you know, they run the trucks anyway, yeah, it's just a small leak, it's not that big a deal, but to you, it's a big deal. Uh, we don't do that, we just don't. The other process we have is we change out our hoses every two years, they're on a process every two years, every hose on that truck, and I just went through two and done that, uh, it's about a twenty thousand dollar hit. Uh, we bring a hose guy in, they sit right there, they take a hose off, they make a new one, put it right back on, so all the fittings, you normally have a fitting or, or line failure is what you have on the street, uh, all those are changed out every two years, and we use a, a braided line, a, a metal braided line, so, I mean, because those are expensive for us, you know, if that hits the ground, it's pricey for us to clean it up. Uh, but to answer your question, what we do, it'd be, as soon as we notice a leak, and look, it happens, you know, hydraulic lines bust and you got to get on it. Uh, every truck carries spill kits that will manage whatever amount of fluid they have in their truck, uh, whether it be diesel fuel, oil, hydraulic oil, whatever, so they have spill kits on the truck, they're, they're trained to put that on the ground, or try to find somewhere grassy area, something to, where we can stop that, uh, we'll dig the grass, the dirt up and throw it on the road, whatever we got to do to stop that leak from, from spreading, and that's the biggest thing. Uh, the second thing is we get a, a crew on it right away. Uh, it's normally a, a, we, I want to call it a pressure wash guy, but he comes out, he, he puts treatment on the oil, uh, you know, once it's in the, in the asphalt, it's there, uh, we have a stuff, and I'm trying to remember what it's called, OPEC or something like that, but you put it on and it actually eats the oil, so it's, uh, it's the best thing we found that will, you know, take it out of, out of the pavement, but you have to do it quick, you know, it can't stay there two weeks, a- after two weeks, it's a done deal, you got to wait on the sun to, to bleach it back out to be the same as the streets.
Thank you.
So, so that's kind of our process, so.
How was your, I know everyone's dealing with staffing issues, how was your current staffing issue, and?
Well, I can tell you, you know, two years ago, just like everyone else, we were having some issues, uh, you know, we actually went through and did wage studies, raised our, raised our pay to our drivers, uh, drivers were making considerable bit more money than they were then, uh, and, and so is everyone, mechanics are everyone, I mean, you're having that same problem everywhere. They, uh, as you see, that's why prices go up, I mean, everything's changing. But, uh, right now, we're actually fully staffed, uh, we were talking about it today, I got six guys on the board, uh, in addition to what I, what I need, and we're in the process of, of employing those at, at different stages. So, you know, we're, right now, we're staffed up, no problems, I'm going to have extra people, so it's not an issue.
Great.
Now, anytime you add something like this, you got to get out and hire more folks, so, you know, and, and we, here in Jasper, where our office is, we've been successful, and hired a lot of good local people, so, not an issue.
Awesome.
Hopefully you didn't cheat me.
We'll just take your best people from other, you can hire them for.
We'll just take your best people from other, you can hire them for, new people for the ones.
We, we do have some winners, you know, we got, we got programs that we put in place, if you see us on Facebook, you'll see it, we give, we have a Franklin Award, I got one lady I just hired not too long ago, she, we do, we do EORs, what we call it, Employee Observation Reports, where we follow them, they also have cameras in the truck, and the cameras, they're out the windshield, on the, on the driver, down both sides and out the back, we can actually go live from my computer and watch them during the day, and we do pretty regular, and we'll do an EOR on them. I got one, like I say, we just hired a couple of months ago, she's had two with no violations, we give them $100 reward for that. If a customer calls in or sends an email, usually if they send an email or a letter in, then, you know, we, we take a picture and put it on Facebook or whatever, we give that driver a Franklin Award, you know, so we were able to get drivers and keep them and, you know, we're a happy family, I mean, they, they love, so, it's a good deal. We also have a 10K, I don't know if you've mentioned this, we have a 10K award, which is different for us than anywhere else, but if a driver has three years with no accidents, no violations, they come to work every day, they do what they're supposed to, they have a good attitude, they don't spill and, you know, spread it out in the neighborhood, then we give them $10,000 bonus. We have a big check, we give them a little check, put it in their bank too, but we'll have a cookout like it's their birthday, and it's all in them. And, and actually, as we go through the process, if we have some of your drivers that run your city have them, we will give them here, so, you know, you guys can be part of it, we'll come here, we'll ask, you know, agenda, come here and present that 10K here, so.
That's great.
It's a pretty good deal.
Heard, heard great reports about you guys, so, it's nice to know.
Mr. Waterman wants to know if you're hiring right now.
Come on, we'll, we'll find a spot.
Ms. Wilson?
Hey, everybody, I apologize for being late, and I just wanted to be sure, I asked Mr. Carlin, but I want to hear it from you, that you offer weekly as well as every other week or bi-weekly pickup, is that correct?
For recycling?
The recycling, so the, the garbage pickup is every week?
Yes.
The recycling is weekly or every other week?
Every other week.
Okay, I'm glad I asked.
Anything else? Ms. McGrew?
Thank you, looking forward to talking more about your service. Tell me about your transition period, we've run the gamut on our experiences with transition periods, and I know there's always a glitch, nothing's perfect, but could you describe your transition time, please?
Hers, you know, like I said, I've been doing this a really long time, so we don't want to be, you know, we got plenty under our belt, and, and you're right, you always have glitches, this or that, you find out things when you're transitioning that you didn't know, that you guys didn't know to tell us, of course, you know, the incumbent's not going to tell you, you know, things like that, so we work through those really as quick as we can. But the cart rollout, what happened there, what we're trying to make happen there is the incumbent uses a particular company to pull their carts and deliver their carts. We will also use that company, so, to deliver ours, so it'd be they pull one, put one, that 'll make it go so much easier. And, you know, of course, then it's relying on them getting that done, you know, the incumbent getting that done. If not, then we'll deliver ours, at least you'll have ours on the street, and, and then we can assist and do what we can to get theirs off the street, so, because that is their responsibility to get theirs off the street.
I was curious to know how you handled a missed pickup?
Right now, what we do is you, they would call our office or email or however they do it, we have a, we have a email that they can go as Waste Pro North Georgia, they can go in there and send an email, I get it, it comes to my personal email, it goes to our dispatcher, our office, and it's put on schedule, either if it's early enough in the day, we'll get it that day while we're here, I mean, that's the way to do it, that's the right way. We just try to scoop it up and get it done. You know, a lot of times, they miss us, not us miss them, sometimes we miss them, but normally in city contracts, you go down the street, you pick up everybody, so it's not like you're going to pick up 50 and leave one or two or whatever, you know, so normally they put it out behind you. Again, we have camera systems, so we can actually go back and, and see if the cam was on the curb when he went by or she went by, so we can tell, and at that point, we'll still pick it up because we're in the service industry and that's what we do, but then after a few times, we'll go, hey, you know, Mr. John, we saw your cam wasn't out, here's the video, you know, hey, if you would, make sure it's out by a certain time, and then that squashes that, once they realize, hey, you know, they know, they usually quit doing that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Awesome, well, thank you very much, thank you for coming tonight and introducing yourselves, so.
Hey, we appreciate you.
Thank you for giving us your phone number. Thank you, Nathan.
So we'll move to discussion and possible action on the award of Task Order Two for the Transportation Improvement Project, Ron Hart College Parkway at Highway 140 Intersection Improvement, Project Design Services to Michael Baker International in the amount of $101,970.60. Ms. Bethany Watson, our city engineer, and while you're here, I want to again recognize you and, and give you our congratulations, Ms. Watson was recognized this morning at the Chamber Breakfast for being selected one of our top 10 in 10, young professionals to watch, under 40 years old, so congratulations on your achievement, and we're very proud of you, so. Now you can proceed. Congratulations.
So as you may recall, back in April, we approved their first task order for this project, for the traffic counts, and now we're ready to get started on the second part of this project. It will include, let's see, the project schedule, the justification statement, limited scope concept report, and then additional track, task, including traffic forecasting and analysis, environmental screening, field visits and meetings. This is just in addition to what we've already approved, the master contract in April. I will also point out, as usual, this is funded by the, I guess it's federally funded, I'm sorry, 80%, so 80% of this amount would be around $81,000, the city would be responsible for about $20,000, of which $7,000 would be impact fees. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Wilson?
I came all the way back just to ask if we could approve Task Order Number Two for the Transportation Improvement Project.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the task order, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion, thank you.
I've been in Athens all day, I'm still in dog mode.
Well, we're glad you joined us, Ms. Wilson, so. So Item E, Discussion of the Request to Abandon a Portion of Henry Clay Street, Mr. Patton.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, in the packet you received, the city has received a request by the property owner of property noted as Tax Map 15 and 13, Parcel 79, they are requesting City Council abandon right-of-way of Henry Clay Street, which runs through the middle of the property. I did email out to the council members some photographs that staff took at the end of the existing Henry Clay, looking into the property, and then Hill Creek Drive, looking north into the property. Mr. Keeter, who is with the ownership of this piece of property, is here to answer any questions you may have. It's unclear as to whether this has ever really been deeded or dedicated right-of-way, haven't found any kind of a plat reflecting that, but if you will get it on record and that sort of thing, have some action, part of the record for official abandonment, since the tax records have picked up a right-of-way. Like I said, Mr. Keeter is here, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have in regards to this request to abandon that portion of Henry Clay.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. So just to confirm, Henry Clay does, there is a road there that ends at the county-city line, and there's, but there's no road where the right-of-way is supposed to be on the, on the city portion on, on Mr. Keeter's property?
Well, through this piece of property, Henry Clay ends at the property line, and then on Hill Creek Drive, there is a curb cut that kind of coincides with where the right-of-way was supposed to be or something, that really did not show up as well in the photograph, but you can look at the photographs and see that hadn't been any attempt to extend Henry Clay through this particular piece of property in a number of years.
Right, okay. I don't know where it came from, I don't even know why it's on the tax map. I was curious, and I went, look, there is no subdivision plat where it was dedicated, so.
Staff couldn't find anything, and Mr. Keeter indicated when he hand-delivered the request to abandon, he wasn't sure if it was really right-of-way or not, and my suggestion was, let's bring it to City Council and officially get it on record.
So we, we wouldn't be doing the normal abandon and disposition process, we would just abandon it and do a quick claim to satisfy anything, whatever interest we may have. We don't own anything.
Because we have no evidence that we own any.
The city doesn't own any of that property, they're, the descriptions encompass this, it doesn't mention this right-of-way, so we don't own anything.
Ms. Smith?
Oh, I was just going to make a motion that we abandon the right-of-way of Henry Clay Street through Tax Map 15N13 Parcel 079.
Okay.
Second.
Up a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
You're welcome. Congratulations, Mr. Keeter.
More note that it was either my office or Mr. Dyer's office.
Always my phantom alleys were that easy, so. So Item E, Discussion of Intergovernmental Agreement with the Development Authority of Cherokee County for the Expansion of Corporate Office Opportunities in the Bluffs, Mr. Peppers.
Council had a presentation last month from Mr. Heath Tippins with Cherokee Office of Economic Development that showed what they would like to do with some of the property that we had acquired up at the Bluffs. We've had a conversation with them, and Mr. Dyer has put together a draft intergovernmental agreement that basically outlines that we would be willing to, to dispose of some of that property to them for the use of a corporate office park. It's roughly 42 acres, it may be a little bit less than that with some of the right-of-way that we've just deeded over to Cherokee County for that Herd Road or Technology Ridge expansion, but basically, the, the outline is that we would sell them 32 of the 42 acres at $45,000 apiece, we would give them the other 10 acres, which is basically going to end up as common space or, or green space within the development. They have agreed, at least in, in principle, to having the name of Canton somewhere in the name of the park, and then, of course, the city would have the rights to all of the design standards as it relates to the project that we currently have on other projects, and then also that there would be covenants that would be extended to that particular property as well. They have a board meeting later in the month of June, so we don't have to take action on it tonight, but if council is okay with the terms that have been outlined, what I would suggest is that we give them a copy of this intergovernmental agreement so that they can look over, look over it over the next couple of weeks, if there's any concerns from there and we could bring it back to you, and then we could, we could move forward with an adoption or a vote on it at the next meeting.
Any questions, comments? Sounds good. All right. Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Tolan had asked for an update on code compliance, based on some of the changes that we made back in January on some of our, some of our items that we wanted to see specifically addressed on residential and commercial properties. I will let you know that code compliance did send out letters to all commercial properties in the city outlining the specific things that we would be looking at in 2022 as it relates to code compliance. Doesn't mean we don't look at the other things, but those were our focus areas for the year, and those were mailed out to those particular property owners. We've been providing the residential information to contacts that we have within homeowners' associations, and as we've had new accounts that have been opened up in the city for, for utility services, most of those are rental accounts, as you know, we're new homeowners to the community, so they're getting a copy of a letter saying, hey, these are the things that we're interested in as a city as it relates to residential codes. And then as we're making contact with property owners, they're also getting a copy of that letter, hey, by the way, here's some other things that we're looking at specific. There's, there's three things that I've got up there for you, one is, is just a basic summary of, of code actions through the middle of May. So in 2021, through the middle of May, from January to, to the middle of May in 2021, there were a total of 12 summons that were issued for code compliance during that timeframe last year. This year, there's been 164 summons that have been issued. Last year, at that time, there were about 124 inspections that had been done, this year, we're at 864 inspections. The one particular thing I would note is that we've been doing a lot of that with less manpower. Because we've pulled the code compliance into the Building and Safety Services Department, they're also focused on other code compliance areas such as commercial fire inspections, which is a, an annual code compliance that we have, as well as anything that might be going on on the building side. We do currently have a second position that's opened up within that department, we have focused it completely towards code compliance, and it's out right now for advertisement for, for individuals, for applications, we have received some applications and we'll move forward with the interview process shortly. One other significant change that we've done on the staffing side is to create a new administrative coordinator position for community development and building and safety services. This will take some of the paperwork off of our code compliance staff as it relates to notices of violation, we're mailing out through certified mail those notices so that we can track that as part of the court, as part of the court case, that stuff that can be done by the administrative coordinator as opposed to our code compliance staff, so pulling some of the administrative functions and the paperwork functions so that they can spend more time actually out in the field. And so that position is under, being advertised right now, and we hope we will get some applications so we can move forward with that hiring soon. I will tell you, the other two reports that I have for you are, are summary reports that we've begun, and in the summary reports, what you have is you've got the type of violation, you've got the address, the date of the violation, these are done on a weekly basis, and then code compliance will enter in some inspection notes, so it may be that you see the, the nuisance, and I'm specifically looking at the report from May 13th as an example, it may be that the nuisance is grass. Well, we're going to have more grass issues in April, May, June, July through the summer than we look at in the winter, so to speak, so some of those things are going to be seasonal as well. But you'll notice, specific to that report from May 13th to May 19th, you'll have inspection notes, and then you'll have incident notes, so that, that's going to include any opportunity that staff has had for direct contact with someone on the site. As these cases progress, the same addresses will show up in the next week's report, whether we've had to do a re-inspection, if we've issued a notice of violation, some notices are seven-day notices, some notices are 30-day notices, if it's a seven-day notice, we expect that in the next report, there's been an inspection and whether or not we're issuing a summons or citation, or whether or not it's been completed, and so that's the way we're tracking cases week to week. The one thing you'll note on here as it relates- The one thing you'll note on here is it relates to location, pretty much citywide. He's, our staff, Merrick, right now, is trying to make sure he's targeting all parts of the city, not overly enforcing one area over another area. But again, you know, having that extra person, I think, is going to be a big benefit to him specifically. And also taking some of that administrative function off as well. But I did want to share those specific reports to you so you could see what they've been working on and how, how the inspections have been going from that standpoint. You know, the one thing to remember is code compliance is not just BLIT, though. We have lots of codes that we have to have compliance on. And so these individuals, for instance, that are going and do commercial fire inspections are also making sure that all the business licenses are properly up. And the person who's operating a business is in compliance with our code as it relates to having a, a, a correct business license. So I wanted to give you this particular piece because this is more about the code compliance on BLIT. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Any questions?
Yeah, I do, just, I guess this is a question. Mr. Peppers, what would you say is, if there's a single or, or top two reasons why we are capturing so many more now? I mean, it's almost, what, eight times or more as many nuisance reports, for instance, as opposed to last year, and my guess is in previous years as well? What would, what do you, what is, what does Mr. McClure attribute that massive increase?
So some of it, some of it in the last couple of years has been more strategic as it relates to the pandemic. 2020, we had far fewer reports of violations just because, you know, we had more people who were at home. They were taking care of their yards, so they were doing things in their, in their properties. But also, at the same time, during a pandemic, we weren't being as aggressive about knocking on doors and trying to, trying to get in people's personal space, so to speak. In 2021, that started picking up a little bit. But we also had some changes in the Building and Safety Services Department as it related to staffing. We had some vacancies, and we're trying to get those filled up. And so I think we've just had more concentration on specific things. I think the idea from that, from, from the committee that we had dealing with BLIT to focus on specific areas has allowed Merrick and, and the rest of our staff to think through those specific items that we think are the most egregious as it relates to what you see from the curb. Focus on those things. Don't display any, don't, don't displace anything that might come in from a citizen as a complaint or an egregious situation that you might see. But really focus on those things that are, are the most important from the roadway or the most visible from the roadway. And when you do that, you're driving by properties, you're looking at the same thing every property, as opposed to being more reactive and looking at things, you know, and looking at the entire property at the time. Does that make sense?
It does, it does. And then, and then because of the, you know, exponential increase in the number of citations or observances, what, it, it takes a special personality to, to communicate whatever the issues are. And I know you have to be, you know, to be very diplomatic. What, what sort of feedback has Merrick and his team got, given you relative to kind of how citizens are responding?
I think on the, on the letters specifically, I think we have had more positive response from residential property owners. A lot of commercial property owners didn't like the fact that we were now calling them out on things like moldy, chrome brush, and things like that. They just didn't like the fact that we were getting to that level of detail. But for commercial properties, those are a lot of the high-visibility areas. And if it's what you see from the road, it impacts the rest of the development. I think we've seen some improvement. But it's one of those things like with bushes and shrubs and things like that. You may get compliance in January or February, and it may look good for a few months, and then they start slacking back down on their landscape. And as we get into April, May, July, and we get into the growing season, we're having to hit those same places again and again because they've just lapsed on their care. So I think it's going to be a process of continuing education with certain property owners. You know, we don't see every violation in the city. I mean, that, that, that's almost an impossible feat to do. And we still do rely on citizens to let us know that they've seen something or something that's a particular concern that they may see on their street or in their neighborhood. But I do think in general, streamlining that 64-page international property maintenance code into, you know, 12 or 15 things that are important citywide that we're going to focus on makes it a little bit easier for both the resident to understand and for the staff to understand.
I mean, I think the numbers, you know, speak for themselves. I mean, the data, it's great to see, you know, what we've done since we've implemented that plan and that focus. But, you know, we're going from zero to, to, to 55 miles per hour. I mean, for our residents, also, it's a learning curve because, I mean, I mean, I'll sit here and tell you, we go back six or seven years ago, codes, no codes were being used for. So they're not used to that. I mean, I got an email today from someone, Governor's Walk, who was not happy with his letter. They got his letter. I mean, and I, I, I get those all the time. So we are, they are across the city, but, you know, this, I know this council's committed to it, and I know our team's committed to it. I know we have, you know, strides to make yet, but, you know, we've got to start somewhere. So, and I think, I'm encouraged to see these numbers. I've just talked to Mr. Peppers, you know, this afternoon, is if we went back, I don't even know if we have these numbers from, you know, seven or eight years ago, but I think they'd all be zero, you know. I think we had some animal violations. It may have been, you know, but I don't, you know, we, we didn't focus on it, wasn't.
The bottom line is, the numbers are better. There's still a lot of work to do.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I think, I think having an additional position, having that extra person in here, is really going to help. And, and in speaking with, with Eric Fortner, who runs Building and Safety Services, that was one of the things he agreed to. He said, look, I think we're doing okay on the building side. I think I'm okay on the inspection side. Merrick really needs help right now, you know. And so we need to concentrate that position to help him out. So, you know, it, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't something that we weren't thinking about. It's just making sure we have that right position in house.
I think, I think he does a great job. I'm, I'm amazed that, you know, the number we were, we're able to issue. But, you know, I think we're doing a lot better, but we have got a long ways to go. You know, got a lot, a lot of room for improvement. We do have a lot of BLIT, and, you know, but I think this council's starting to, to try to address that. And, and, you know, you can't do that overnight, but we got to start somewhere. And I think that extra person will almost double our resources, so that should help lots. So, Mr. Carlin?
I was just noting, I think my first retreat, this was something that Mr. Tolan was picking up to run with, and did the hard work, worked that committee, which, I wasn't on that one. Joel was on it, and who else was on that? Was that Nick?
And Nick.
Nick, yeah.
Who worked through, how can we get these codes in line? What can we do to make this more effective instead of just having dormant codes on the book that nobody was looking at?
Yeah.
That's been coming up on two years in the process, and it's been a long road, but this is the fruit of that. So I'm going to give flowers where they're due.
Definitely.
That committee's work that this council adopted is fantastic.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carlin. And the committee did do, do good work. I think the credit, you know, in my view, it's all about execution. And we have staff that's, you know, I would compare to any, any other city. And the leadership, you know, obviously directing them to, to make some of the changes. So it's really a, a, a great team effort.
It was great. Go ahead.
I was just going to mention, too, that, to me, the, the third piece of the equation is, you know, our officers, our, our code compliance staff can go out, they can do the inspection. They can issue the notice of violation. They can issue a summons. When it goes to court, then it's in a different, it's in a different group of people's hands. And so we have started sitting down more frequently with our solicitors and saying, hey, these are the things we're interested in, you know. In the past, sometimes the city was more aggressive in, you know, giving grace, you know. Here's, here's a period of time to fix this. If we have people who are getting multiple and multiple violations over time, there's no grace period anymore. You know, they need to be paying fines. You know, if, if, if it's a homeowner versus a rental property, maybe that's your consideration on, you know, the amount of grace period. Is it, is it an issue of the, of the property owner? Is it an issue of the landlord? Is it an issue of, you know, let's work through these things, and let's have conversations about the individual cases and try to figure out what the best solution is. And sometimes the best solution is going to be a fine. And that's okay if it gets compliance. We've also had a couple of occasions, I think, this year where we've moved forward with having lots mode and then using the court as a way to recoup the funds for having that work done. So that's something we had not been doing a lot of in the past.
And I do think it takes great teamwork, but I think it starts with the political will up here that we're, we're willing to, to put it on the line and say we're going to do something about it. So again, Mr. Tolan and everyone up here for, you know, saying we're going to clean up our city. And, you know, it's easier said than done, but, but I think we're making some good strides. So keep up the great work, everyone, so.
That's all I have.
That's all you have? Thank you, Mr. Peppers.
I just have one quick item. We have one opening on the Main Street Board. And according to the current bylaws, we are missing a representative on the Main Street Board from the DDA. And so I would like to nominate Jennifer Hughes as the Main Street Board Member representing the DDA, which make us incompliant with their current bylaws. So I would like to nominate her, ask for a second, and approve from council if they so wish.
Second.
Nomination is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion, so. And with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate very quickly.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate very quickly.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned. Thank you all.